City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded September 19th, 2022.
At seven o'clock, I will call the regular common council meeting of the City of Stevens Point to order. Carlson is excused. Can you call the rest of the roll, please?
Christensen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Zarazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Niebone.
Here.
Shuda.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Fishler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
And we do have a quorum. If you would join me, please, in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Again, if you haven't signed in yet, please do so. There's a sign up sheet at the white table. If there's any item you wish to speak on, please register, and McKenna has those slips. Let's see. Boy, we're into September already, huh? Lots of things going on in the city. The first thing I wanted to talk about this week, September 19th through the 25th, is National Rail Safety Week. And I got some information here. There are 2,148 rail grade crossing collisions that resulted in 658 personal injuries and were responsible for 238 fatalities in the United States last year in 2021. 1,151 trespassing incidents have occurred in the United States, resulting with 528 pedestrians being killed and another 623 being injured while trespassing on railroad property and rights of way during 2021. This is common. I see this with photographers, where you'll go out on a train bridge and take pictures. They look really pretty. That's illegal. Unless you have permission from the railroad, and you won't get permission from the railroad, you can't be there. So don't. These numbers should alarm you. And we're talking over 1,000 incidents of people getting injured just on walking down the railroad tracks or being where they're not supposed to be. So, to highlight that, I have declared this week, the 19th through the 25th of September, National Rail Safety Week in the City of Stevens Point, and urge people to educate themselves on the railroad rights and laws, and try and be cognizant of the dangers that exist. Also, because we don't have another meeting between here and there, I wanted to just point out that we are making a declaration, also proclamation rather, declaring October 15th as White Kain Safety Day. Those people with vision impairments have a challenging time sometimes navigating through communities, grocery stores, everything like that. So we wanted to raise awareness of that as well. If you see the white cane, know that there's someone who is visually impaired, and act accordingly. We should be careful all of the time, of course, but we want to highlight that. So we'll have that proclamation coming out before October 15th, but we don't have a council meeting before then. Let's see. We were recently awarded $1.3 million grant, Transportation Alternative Program Grant, for the Plover River Crossing. And I want to publicly acknowledge all of the hard work that was put in by Steve Menzel, Tori Jennings, Dan Kramer, and all of the people who contributed to make this happen. So we're going to be moving along on that. That is really going to connect, well, your side with our side, with everybody else in the free world.
The good side with y'all's side.
Cold-blooded. Hot-blooded. Chief, you got some salve for that burn? And then the last thing I want to talk about, well, no, two things, actually. October 6th, we are going to have a public information session and a question and answer session at the Spash Auditorium regarding the Business 51 Plan. We've got ADCom coming, probably. We'll decide that tonight. And representatives from the Department of Transportation coming, along with our city staff. So we're going to kind of give a layout of what has happened to date, some of the changes that have taken place since that September meeting, and then give an opportunity for everyone to ask questions to the best of our ability. We're not going to be there all night, but to the best of our ability, we're going to answer the questions that people have in regards to Business 51 and how that reconstruction might look. If you have questions now that you know you want answered, email them to either my office or Director Scott Beddun's office, or you can drop them off at City Hall. We'd love to have those questions ahead of time, and that way we can put out a little pamphlet of the frequently asked questions for the people who, or if we don't have time to verbally answer them, I guess, is the best way to put it. And they can email their alder, too, and they're going to send it to the directors.
I have a question. Will that be available by Zoom, too? I know there are a few questions about that.
It probably will not be available via Zoom, but it will be recorded. So we will have that recorded. You just won't have the interaction there. So if you have questions ahead of time, and I know many, many people do, get them out to us. And then finally, on the November ballot, and I understand Clerk Ganter just got the absentee ballots today, so those will be going out shortly, but there are four referendum questions. Because of the referendum that passed in August, we now have to go to a public vote prior to construction on any transportation-related project greater than $1 million. Our normal course of work requires us now to go to referendum. Two of the questions pertain to our normal capital budgeting process, roads and things that we do every single year, and one is for reconstruct. The reconstruction of the road means we tear out everything, including the substructures underneath, water, wastewater, stormwater, and replace everything from below up. And we have a standard rating system that we use, so one of the questions pertains to our normal reconstruction. The next one pertains to our normal resurfacing. Resurfacing just scrapes off some of the bad asphalt and puts a new layer of asphalt down and gives the road another 30 years of life or so. Again, things we do normally every year and wouldn't affect your taxes any more than any other year. Those are things that are within the capital budget anyway. The other two questions pertain to development. One is a railroad sidetrack out in East Park Commerce Center. We've been talking about it. We've got plans for it. We just weren't going to install it or get it constructed until we were pretty sure we had an user for it. Well, we're pretty sure we have an user for it. So the railroad siding track is the third question, and that is going to be, to allow the businesses in that East Park Commerce Center to utilize the rail system. It has to be a sidetrack to offload those cars from Canadian Nationalist mainlines. They keep them off to the side, and then we put railroad spurs to whoever wants them. That's not part of it. Just the railroad sidetrack, but we're asking permission to do that. That's going to be funded through the TIF, the Tax Incremental Financing District, and again, won't affect your tax, property taxes, my property taxes at all. And the last one is the extension to Badger Avenue, which is also going to be needed for future development. Again, we wouldn't normally put these through unless we had a developer, but we're pretty sure we have something that's going to need this, so we're asking permission to extend Badger Avenue. Again, that will also be paid for through the TIF district, and it will not affect your property taxes or my property taxes in that regard. If you have questions about any of those referendum questions that are going to be on the November ballot, please contact city staff, contact your alderperson, get your questions answered. Don't rely on Facebook, and I would be really cautious about some of the local news outlets. Go right to the horse's mouth. We would be happy to sit down with you and talk to you about those four questions. And I think that's enough for me. So, I'm going to say one more time, anybody who wishes to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register at this time. We don't have any public hearings, so we won't need to do any of that. Anybody wishing to speak on a specific agenda item? That hasn't signed up already. All right. McKenna, if you could bring those up to me? Nothing? Perfect. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So then now we will go to persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes on a non-agenda item. Alderperson Niebone.
Yes, thank you very much. Yesterday was the 75th anniversary of the United States Air Force, of which I am a proud veteran. So I just wanted to say, happy birthday, Air Force.
There you go. All right. Any other alderpersons? All right. Then we will move on. We have a presentation. I had the distinct pleasure of meeting Ryan, who is the new president of the Stevens Point YMCA, and he's got some exciting things to talk about, kind of re-energizing the YMCA. So Ryan, if I could have you approach the lectern, and we'll let you roll.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to come up here, and thank you to your time and expertise in helping guide in our community. I'm honored to stand here as the new president and CEO of your Stevens Point YMCA. I want to give a little bit of background about myself. I grew up in central Wisconsin. We had three family dairy farms in the Iowa Scandinavian area. I went to high school in Wapaka. I graduated right here from UWSP a long time ago. I coached football in Roch Holt. I did my student teaching in Amherst, and all those experiences took me into different places. I taught down in Milwaukee Public Schools, and then finally as a teacher in a small school outside of Green Bay in Pulaski. I started working part-time for the Green Bay Y many years ago during my winters. I didn't coach a winter sport, so needed a way to keep my young self out of trouble. I fell in love with the mission and the impact of our YMCA. 16 years later, that journey has brought me right back here to Stevens Point. I spent 11 years at the Green Bay Y in a number of different roles, whatever our CEO said, Ryan, you're going to do this. And then the last five, I had the opportunity to serve. Rhine Lander is the CEO for the YMCA at the Northwoods. Stevens Point has always had my eye, from my central Wisconsin roots to my time here at UWSP. If you knew Dave Morgan, the former CEO at the Y, he'd tell you that more than once did I bend his ear and say, Dave, if there's ever an opportunity in Stevens Point, make sure you keep me in mind. That day is here. With my roots here in central Wisconsin and my mom and dad living right outside of town, my wife and I are honored and privileged to be a part of this community. What was it about the Y that caught me and never let me go? Because as an elementary fiaid teacher, it's a dream job. So to leave that for something else, it had to be pretty special. It goes all the way back to 1844 in London, England. During the Industrial Revolution in London, a young man named George Williams saw a need in his community, a need to give young men a place to belong and leave lives of impact. That first YMCA was formed, and we continue to evolve as YMCA's as we move forward. That work all the way back in 1844 mirrors what happened here in Stevens Point in the late 60s. Serve community need and strengthen the foundations of community. Your YMCA in Stevens Point is here with that promise to strengthen the foundation of our community, and we're more eager than ever to reimagine that as we move forward. Most people see the Y as a gym and a swim, but we're not. We're not a building. We're not wellness classes, group exercise, or a pool. We are a movement and a cause-driven organization of all ages, of all walks of life, brought together to strengthen our community. A high-functioning YMCA leads to a high-functioning and quality community that people want to belong. Your YMCA is evolving, just as it has been since 1844. The events of the last couple of years require the Y and all of us to think and to respond differently to support our friends and neighbors. The Y inherently here in Stevens Point is a strong organization. We have a foundation of impactful professionals that care and act. We weathered the storms of these past few years. We continued to run essential childcare. We reduced social isolation for seniors, and we provided assistance to nearly 3,000 people, allowing all of our kids, adults, and families a place to remain, living normal lives without a financial burden. You see, the Y is one of your community's leading nonprofit organizations, and we don't turn anybody away for the inability to pay, and it's all thanks to the generosity of those that support us. But even so, as with all cause-driven organizations, we're in a phase that we need to focus on the future and align our resources to those needs that matter the most. With new leadership at the Y, we'll walk through a methodical process to form this vision of greater impact. Soon, the Y will be putting out information on gathering what our community sees as the most pressing needs. We're going to align those needs with our areas of focus and develop strong partnerships for areas where we are not the experts. When we request this feedback, we ask that you and all in our community provide their voice. Following that community needs assessment phase, we'll walk through organizational strategic planning. We'll engage our community and our community leaders throughout and ensure that your YMCA has a roadmap and a vision to be the best that we possibly can be. At the end of the day, the work that we do at the Y comes down to our areas of focus, youth development. We want to nurture the potential of every child and teen for healthy living, to support the health and well-being of our community, and social responsibility to give back and provide support to our friends and neighbors. So, as in 1844 with George Williams, he started this crazy idea of a YMCA. Your local YMCA will continue to be a partner in transformational change and impact for those around us. To close, as you or anyone in our community engages in community-wide dialogue on pressing needs, please keep the YMCA in mind and bring us to the table so that we can use our resources and our expertise and our support mechanisms to make Stevens Point a great community for all. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Quick question for you. If someone wanted to learn more about the YMCA and the services and programs you offer, how would they go about doing that?
Call me. 715-952-9300.
One more time?
715-952-9300.
Great.
Direct to my office, no switchboard, nor anything else. So I'll be reaching out to each of the city council members just to get your perspective from areas of the community as well here. I'm only just over a month in, so give me a little bit of time as I get my feet underneath me. I should probably start with Mark. I believe you're our alderperson, so I probably should start with Mark on city council and then work from there. But really, anybody on the Y team will be able to help.
Perfect. Thanks, Ryan, and welcome back to the community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Item number six is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Alder Christensen.
Yes. If I would request that we deal with the minutes and actions from the Personnel Committee separately, because there's an item there that I need to abstain from.
Perfect. We will pull the minutes and actions of the Personnel Committee meeting of September 12th for further discussion. Anyone else wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, I would accept a motion. President Johnson?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, except for the Personnel Committee meeting minutes and actions.
I second that.
Great. Seconded by Morrow. Discussion there. Hearing none. All those, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Now, we will consider the minutes and actions of the Personnel Committee meeting of September 12th. Need a motion? Alder Keimer?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes and actions of the Personnel Committee.
Seconded by Zarazua. Discussion there. We'll note your abstention, Alderperson Christensen, and if you're in favor, vote yes, and opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen is abstained. Shore.
Nope. I forgot to mention one thing at the, go ahead. I'll mention it.
Keimer.
This might change everything.
No, no. It was from the last one. There's just, go ahead, call the roll.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson. He's excused, sorry. Niebone. Shuda.
Aye.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. What I forgot to mention is, and you're not approving the capital budget, but we did make some changes already. That capital budget flows till the final night when you approve it. But originally, we had $210,000 budgeted for slag ceiling, which is really road maintenance. We scratched that, put it back into the road maintenance general budget. However, with the pressing needs for both the police department and the fire department budget, or roofs, we are moving that $210,000 back out of streets again to fix the roofs. You'll see this all updated prior to next month's consideration of the actual budget. I just wanted to give you all a heads up that we moved some more things around, and I can almost guarantee you there'll probably be a couple of other shuffles, but we're going to make sure everyone's aware of those. All righty. Item number seven is a resolution. It's a request from Mark and Janice Klein to rezone the property located at 5410 Windy Drive at the parcel identified in your packet from RLD Low Density Residential to our three residential, single-family, and two-family district, consistent with Chapter 23.01 Sub 12 Sub B Sub 8.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Christensen. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is another resolution. That's a request from Doug Stingle, who's representing the Schminkley Reserve Visitor Center for a conditional use permit to construct a ground-mounted solar array on an unaddressed parcel off of North Point Drive with parcel identified in your packet, also consistent with our Chapter 23.02 Sub 1 Sub A Sub 5.
I may, I make a motion to approve, please.
Motion by Morrow, seconded by Fishler. Discussion. I'm really glad this is happening, because we took all that effort trying to streamline the solar process, and this is a fruit of that labor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is an ordinance amendment, a request from the City of Stevens Point to amend Chapter 23, the zoning ordinance of the Revised Municipal Code of the City of Stevens Point. Set request to amend Section 23.05 related to the bylaws of the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 62.23 Sub 7 Sub E. Moved by Keimer?
Yes.
I'll second.
Seconded by Niebone. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 10 is an ordinance amendment, another request from the City of Stevens Point. Jesus, guys, huh? To amend Section 7.4 of the Historic Preservation and Design Review Commission Guidelines as it relates to required approvals to construct a new accessory structure.
Motion to approve.
Aye, seconded.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion there. Seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 11 is another ordinance amendment, again, to amend Chapter 7.4 of the Historic Preservation and Design Review Commission Design Guidelines, this one relating to how the required approvals for the renewal of expired design review certificates.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderperson Morrow, seconded by Alderperson Keimer. I was looking at Christensen. Most of this is District 1. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 12 is another ordinance amendment, request from the City of Stevens Point to amend Section 6.1.2.6 of Historic Preservation and Design Review Commission Design Guidelines, this one relating to demolition review guidelines.
I will, I'm going to make it a motion.
Thank you, Alderperson Morrow, and seconded by Shore. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 13 is an ordinance amendment, 9.05, as it relates to parking. Moved by Shuda, seconded by Morrow. Discussion there.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're going for three in a row. Sorry about that. Well, it's just waiting.
Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 14 is an ordinance amendment to Section 24.01 regarding disorderly conduct directed at election officials and the increased forfeiture. Moved by President Johnson, seconded by Alderperson Shore. Discussion.
One comment that I'd like to make, I know that Mary talked about this, but I mean, this is kind of sad that we had to end up having to have to actually do this, but this is something that I know that has happened a few times here, and hopefully that it won't happen that much more, I hope.
I concur. I think everybody at this table will. We're going to find out in just a minute. President Johnson.
Yeah, I always thought that election workers should have those T-shirts that say, we're heroes, because they are the heroes of our democracy. So, all of the election workers out there, thank you for all that you do.
Absolutely. And you're right. It's sad that it has to come to this, because I don't want to have to make an ordinance that says we should be nice to each other. We should all know that already. But your election workers especially, things get heated. It's not their fault. They're volunteering, basically. Their time. I mean, they get paid a little bit, but that's not enough to put up with anyone's abuse. Same with your checkout lady or man at the grocery store, or the person selling you gasoline. They don't control the gas prices. Be nice to people. All right. Clerk, please call this roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Carlson is excused. Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Items 15, 16, 17, and 18, all are initial resolutions. That means we're introducing them, as they relate to borrowing on a couple of different topics. We have with us Greg Johnson from Ellers. If there are any questions, but I think everybody is pretty familiar with how we borrow and what things go, so we will take them separately. But if anyone has any questions, Greg is available. So, let's start with 15, the initial resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of general obligation promissory notes and certain related details. The information was included in your packet. Alderperson Christensen.
Move approval.
Thank you. Seconded. Seconded by President Johnson. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.